Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order please. If you can stand for the rise of the flag this evening.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can let the record show Mrs. Griffin, please, that Mr. DeRosa is attending the meeting via conference call and Mr. Sadi is unable to be here this evening. So we'll move on to student reports and I believe Jonathan Law goes first tonight.
Good evening. Academically at law, we hosted the SATs on Saturday, November 7. We also hosted a financial aid night on Thursday, November 5 for all grades. And so seniors got the FAFSA information and then junior parents got what's going to happen next year out of a layout. Students, seniors took the math and reading prompts to be eligible for graduation and seniors were eligible to take the ASPAB test, which is a military aptitude test.
Guidance hosted a financial aid night, November 5. Wednesday, November 11, freshmen and sophomores are visiting Fordham University. November 19, they're having an assembly for students who are interested in advanced manufacturing and then the following day juniors are visiting Husetonic if they're interested in their program for advanced manufacturing. Counselors are meeting with juniors to create a game plan for post-high school during common time. And this is the last month for college business at Jonathan Law. And colleges this month are Albright College, Mitchell College, Manhattan College, and University of Parker.
Athletically, Hannah Savoy broke the school record in the 500 meter freestyle in the SCC championships. We had four all SCC nominees: boy soccer, Kevin Lynn and Antonio Giraj; girls volleyball, Cassie Both; and girls soccer, Bethany Edwards. Senior student athletes at law are eligible for a $1,000 scholarship by the CT High School Coaches Association who have a minimum GPA of 3.0. And football is hosting a coke drive for the Thanksgiving Day football game.
Other happenings at law: Key Club got a proclamation from the mayor declaring week of November 2nd through 6th for a Key Club Week. Mala UN hosted retail 101 with help of Key Club members. Key Club also helped out in 8th grade sports night, 2-5 cave races in apparent orientation. Veterans are coming in Wednesday, November 11 for veterans who are going to speak at law. Tuesday, freshmen are attending the underage drinking forum hosted at law. Homecoming is November 20. Band and Color Guard won first place for their division in the MAC championships. And Friday and Saturday, Jonathan Club are presenting their fall production almost ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. Foreign.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
To start off, we had academics. Congratulations to Taylor Lambies and Ben Cook, whose stories are selected and published in the teening website where they take outstanding essays, stories, and pieces of art created by teenagers and post them on the internet. The Foreign Sikorsky STEM team attended the Sikorsky STEM kickoff at Jonathan Law on October 9 at the Chester Airport in Connecticut. There was a Sikorsky Blackhawk helicopter there for the students to see. And a foreign and Sikorsky STEM alumni from Foreign's class of 2013 was present as an engineering ambassador. A good time was had by all. Ms. Farrell's journalism class went to Southern Connecticut State University to participate in journalism workshops. The class met Dennis House, speaker from Face the Nation, and had a lot of fun learning about journalism. They are excited to bring the ideas back to the mainstream media newspaper. So in guidance news, today, 61 seniors have submitted 283 applications to 103 colleges. The Foreign School Counseling Department will be hosting onsite admissions days with Southern Connecticut State, University of New Haven, and Western Connecticut State universities. Students have the opportunity to interview with an admissions counselor and will receive a decision on the spot right at Foreign High School. Foreign will be hosting a financial aid night and scholarship information session on November 18 at 6:30 PM in the auditorium. Current scholarships available are listed on the Foreign Guidance website. On Monday, October 2, 25 seniors visited Husetonic Community College's manufacturing program. The students spoke with current students and had the opportunity to see the machines at work. After the HCC portion of the day, which I think is just the Husetonic Community College, the students went to Schick to see the real-world application of the training HCC's program provides.
Okay, for sports, on October 20, the New Haven Register selected Lauren Knoppel as their Tuesday Player of the Day. Lauren led the Lady Lions volleyball team with 24 assists in their victory over Guilford. Congratulations, Lauren. The SCC cross-country championships were held on Thursday, October 22 at Hampton Asset State Park in Madison. And Jack Audrey and Lily Stigler both earned all SCC honors for their outstanding performances. Congratulations to Emma Longley on her first-place finish in the SCC diving championship at Hampton High School. And Lindsay Broderick and Cedric Lynn-Gain were named Foreign's high school SCC scholar-athletes for the month of October. Lindsay and Cedric have excelled in the classroom and as well in the soccer field and kind of miscellaneous. Congratulations to Foreign's family consumer science, certified nursing, business and technology departments who are recognized at a lunch-in for their excellence in Connecticut statewide CTE assessment. Over 100 high schools participated in this assessment and Foreign students ranked number four in the state. And then the Foreign homecoming dance was held on Saturday, October 24, and it was a great success and we danced a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a big agenda tonight, so if you guys want to go off into your homework, feel free to exit at this point. Thank you, we'll see you next month. Okay, public comments. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education Personnel or any person associated with the Milford Public School system. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Please be advised that our meetings are live on Channel 78 on Cablevision and if you would state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes, please. Is there anybody who'd like to address the board this evening?
Tom Jagidzinski, 27 Berkeley Terrace. As you know, the next Board of Education will have a 5-5 split in membership between the two parties. Certainly, no one wants a repeat, what occurred when the Planning and Zoning Board had a similar situation. Week after week, the members cast tie votes after tie votes, embarrassing themselves in the city. Fortunately, the 5-5 split will provide the board with the opportunity to come up with a win-win solution. This board's policy governance manual actually calls for such an outcome in the section dealing with the election of the board chair. It states that every attempt shall be made to seek representation from both parties in the leadership role if the composition of the board is equally divided. I've been told that the last time this situation occurred, the two parties shared the chair responsibility, effectively serving as co-chairs. I don't believe this is practical at this time, but the members could decide to have one party occupy the chair for a year and then have it turned over to the other party. This would show everyone, parents, students, teachers, administrators, and all the citizens of Milford, that the members of both parties are interested in having a nonpartisan board and that their only interest is in the welfare of our students and our community. Politics has no place on this board. Thank you.
Danielle Pastor, 78 Hill Street. I know you know why I'm here. I'm here about changing the distance for the walkers to the high schools. And right now it's at 2 miles. I'd like to change back down to where it was at 1 and 1/2 miles. I'm sure you saw we made the front page of the paper again, this time not problem. This time it was about the walkers. The reporter had contacted my husband about doing this story and she actually showed up at my house. I had offered to everyone here, no one else had taken me up on it. But she actually came to my house one morning and it took her 40 minutes to walk from my house to Jonathan Law High School. 40 minutes. 45 minutes on the way back. And that's been, that was on a nice 60-degree morning, not in the middle of the winter, not when the weather was bad. I'm just, it concerns me when I look at the Board of EdVision statement where it says Milford Public Schools will be a progressive school district in which students are prepared to achieve at their highest level, surrounded by an engaged community that is proud of its educational system. Right now, I don't think there's much to be proud of when I think that you are going to vote against changing it and that they are not going to be ready to achieve at their highest level after walking 40 minutes, when many people won't even take a job where they have to drive 40 minutes away. Asking a 14-year-old to walk to school 40 minutes is too much. I'm asking you to change it.
Hi, everyone. Kathy Bat, 17 Eastern Parkway. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Sue Tobias. We had a conversation on Saturday. Thank you for talking and walking. And I also just like to comment that I really want you to open your hearts and change the distance for high school. Change it back to, or change to 1 and 1/2 miles. And also for middle school, too, change it to 1 mile. Just open your hearts for the reasons that have been presented in the past. I'm not going to rehash them again. But I would just ask that you at least consider it and vote and do the right thing. So thank you for your time.
Susan Krasinski, 60 Crescent Drive. There's been a lot of talk on Facebook. We have a page that has over 100 parents and citizens that have been talking about the transportation issue for like the last 19 months. And someone suggested last week that maybe the start times were different when the transportation policy was put in place, so it was later in the morning. So I went to the library and tried to do a little research and found out that at least in 1983, the start times for high school were 7:40, so 20 minutes later. But what I also discovered when I was looking through was that in 1991, when the city went from a K-8 system to an elementary-middle school system and formed the three middle schools, West Shore Middle School, and I can't speak for the other two because I don't know their bus stops as well as my own neighborhood, but West Shore Middle School, the students in Rivercliff and Devon received the bus to West Shore Middle School when the schools first were opened. So that would have been the perfect time when you redistricted, when the city was changing from that K-8 system back to a middle school system to had said, you know, we're going to reestablish, as the board did this year or last year, reestablish. And almost every bus stop that was listed in 1991 were the same bus stops that we had just a couple of years ago in our neighborhoods in our area. And even, I went back a couple of years earlier, 1989, when it was a K-8 school, the students in our neighborhoods in Devon and Rivercliff, those same bus stops were still there when it was a K-8 school. So to say that our kids were courtesy riders and at some point, there must have been some event that put those kids, it wasn't true when it was a middle school. There must have been a decision to keep those buses there. So the kids in the Rivercliff and Devon areas have always had a bus to West Shore Middle School. And I don't know if it's true, but I'm thinking if it was true on the west side of town, it might have been true on the east side of town. A couple of weeks ago, when the administration gave you their numbers about how many students would be affected if the numbers were reduced, I was asked about a week or two ago, does this really only affect the 3rd district? And it doesn't. If you look at the numbers that were given, there's, if the transportation policy were to change and we were to reduce the walking distances, there would be 66 additional students from law and 105 from Foreign. There would be 24 additional students from East Shore and 19 from West Shore and 13 from Harbor Side. So it's pretty equal, with maybe a couple more on the east side. So this doesn't just affect the west side of town where we are much more vocal, I'll admit. We've been up here for months talking to you and very few parents or citizens from the east side, but it affects both sides of town equally and then some pockets in the middle. So just think about that when you're going to go, please. Thank you.
Pat Morhoff, 49 Crescent Drive. I, too, would like you to go back to the walking distances that the middle schools have always enjoyed. And again, like I said, the last time that we met, it's important for students to be ready to learn. And as an educator, which I have been for the past 22 years, I know that that's very important. You know, I have lived through the no child left behind and this actually writes itself. There's like children running behind school buses, literally walking behind school buses, and it's because adults are doing that. And that's your legacy. We've been up here. We've been asking. The kids would like you to do that. So it's really up to you to make those choices, dollars, cents, teachers or learners. That's really up to you. I know that teachers do not think to themselves that their kids are overtired. They've already brought that up. There's nothing to do with the snow, nothing to do with the ice. Even if they have a bubble around them, they have no idea that these kids are that tired by the end of the week. What's wrong with Johnny? He seems really lazy. Well, he's exhausted compared to his counterpart. Well, he's from the poor side of town. And the sad part is, we have that. I live it. And then I say to people, I have a sixth-year degree. I live across the street from an architect, two architects. I live across the street from a college professor. It's still that side of town. You want to know why we're rattling cages? Because we live on that side of town. We care about it. The others have given up. They say you don't listen. They say nobody cares. No child left behind. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kira Flannery. I live at 41 North Street. And I want to begin by thanking all the members of the board for the countless hours of service you've given to this community over the past two years. Under your tenure, you've responded to requests to keep our schools open and transition our elementary schools from the K-2, 3 to 5 model back to K-5. A measure, I must say, was impressively executed over the summer. And I want to thank all the members of the administration for that as well. Additionally, you've presided over a much-needed redistricting that is far more complicated than any of us could have imagined. So in short, you've had quite a busy two-year term. And that is why I'm grateful that as you approach the end of your tenure together, that you're responding to our community yet again by considering reducing walking distances for our students. While I deeply appreciate the fact that we've experienced cost savings with stricter enforcement of our current walking policy these past few years, I also think it's important to realize when a cost-saving measure looks really good on paper, but it just doesn't work for our community. Over the past few months, you've heard from parents, educators, PTA leaders, all coming to you, coming before you to give you reasons why we need this revision in our transportation policy. Why making it easier for students to get to school is as important as what happens when they get there. Why a difference in 1 and 1/2 mile will make a huge difference in the lives of 250 students and their families. My son is not one of the 250 students that will be directly impacted by your decision tonight. I'm here today as a taxpayer, in support of reducing walking distances because I believe it's the right thing to do for our community. And I hope you feel the same. Thank you again for your service.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carol Thomas, 84 Thompson Street. I'm here again to ask you, one last time, to vote in favor of reducing the walking distances. Driving 40 minutes to work for an adult might be a deal breaker, but that's what you're asking our kids to do every day, Monday through Friday. If a child has to walk 2 miles to school, 2 miles home, just do the math. Every week. Multiply that by 180 days. That's an awful lot of exercise. I also know that three students were inadvertently, are inadvertently, receiving the bus to Jonathan Law. They did, their parents did not get notification that their children were mistakenly put on the bus. They still don't know that next year, they are within the walking distance, that their children will not get the bus next year. I also know that one student at West Shore was inadvertently given the bus but did receive a letter saying, "Your child was inadvertently given the bus. We are going to take the bus away from your student as soon as the Nobita Avenue construction project is over." Now, I'm not in favor of taking away the bus from the three students that I personally know of that have been given the bus to law. I'm just saying, if you say your policy is one thing, then it should be fair and equitable to everyone. And in my argument, I would say that that one student to West Shore probably wasn't going to be the deal breaker for that bus. It probably wouldn't have been a big deal to keep that one student on the bus. I'm not in favor of taking the bus away from anyone, as you all well know. So please, one last time, please vote in favor of reducing the walking distances and do what's right for the students of Milford. Thank you very much.
Bob Thomas, 84 Thompson Street. Just hope you all consider changing this for the safety of our children in town. And if they didn't spend all the money they did on the surveys to save money, that money will still be there.
Hi, Paul Carrots, 81 Clark Street. I believe my son is one of the kids that has been given the bus and was not supposed to get the bus, from what I understand. I live a couple doors down from Danielle Pastor. It's a 40-minute walk, as she said, and it's ridiculous. I live on a corner that I clear my sidewalk in the wintertime where the plows come by, put the snow back on it. Actually, plow the snow right up to the corner. And there's two corners on the other side that they can push it to and they help. So I really would like you guys to reconsider because I'm not going to be happy. I have three more kids that are going to go through to school and it's going to be a real issue. I think you should change it because I don't want to get a letter next year telling me that I can't get my kids on a bus. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none. I'll close public comment and we'll move on to the chair's report. I, let's see, I do want to take a minute tonight and recognize we have two board members who are leaving us after tonight. This is their last meeting. And Dr. Goldorkin and Mr. Pacelli. And I just wanted to take a minute and thank you very much for your service to the board. You've both brought a great perspective to our discussion and we're going to miss you. And I know you've both always kept the students first. And Dr. Goldorkin, I'd like to just present you with a plaque in appreciation of your service. Thank you very much. You're welcome. And Mr. Pacelli.
I have a plaque to you as well. And I just want to thank you so much for your two years of service. It's much appreciated. And I know the children have always been in your, first and foremost, in your minds as we've deliberated over our issues. So thank you very much. Enjoy your retirement.
I'm going to call for liaison reports. Maybe I have the liaison reports. So I attended the PTA council meeting last month. And I had, back in September when we met, they had asked me to find out some information for them regarding three issues. One was brought up was the Junior Honor Society. Some parents were interested in seeing if we could start a Junior Honor Society at the middle schools. So I provided them with some information from Dr. Thieser, who is familiar with the Junior Honor Society. And she, you know, indicated that if it was something that the parents wanted to pursue, they should get together and approach the principals to get their input. She also indicated, which I shared with them, that there was a process to get a Junior Honor Society going. It's not something that just happens overnight and probably couldn't happen for this year, but certainly was worth investigating if the parents felt strongly about it. So I think that's probably something that those parents are pursuing. There were some questions about the opt-in notice for transportation. And Mr. Richatelli explained to me that the notice doesn't, there is not a notice that goes out citywide because the provision doesn't necessarily apply to every student. It could be confusing. But they did put a notice on the website with a link that brings parents to information about how to apply for the opt-in program if you live on the fringes of the walking distance. And then a third question was regarding the CAP and CMT science. There was some interest in knowing what tests were still being given for science. And I provided them with the information that the CMT science was still being given in grades 5 and 8 and that the CAP was being given in grade 10. And that was that. And then I also attended the Milford Education Foundation fundraiser on Saturday at the Planetarium at Foreign High School. It was really very interesting. I gave you each a sky calendar. If you like stargazing, this tells you what stars you can see up in the sky and where to find them for the month of November. I learned that the Planetarium is now some, over 40 years old. And when it was first opened, apparently it rivaled the Hayden Planetarium. So we have a hidden gem here in Milford, I think. They also indicated that, you know, the parts are starting to wear and they had to, there were a couple of features that weren't working on the Planetarium, but they, on the camera, with the piece of equipment, but that they'd just gotten in some new parts, so they were hoping to get that, those features up and running soon. But it was really very nice. It was very interesting. I'm very excited to be able to participate in that. So hoping that maybe there'll be some talk of using the Planetarium more frequently in our future. I know it's something that the foundation has an interest in for that as a reason. I also want to congratulate Kathy Binetti. She's not here tonight, is she? I wanted to congratulate Kathy Binetti on winning, she won a CAVE award for her, well, Milford Public Schools did, won a CAVE award for one of the publications that she put together for us this year. So that will be recognized at the CAVE conference that's coming up. I think that's all that I had for chair's report. Pass the wand over to Dr. Thieser for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Flannery. So we're going to begin this evening with an update on the summer projects. As you know, most of the buildings and grounds projects occur during the summer because that's when we have the fewest number of students in the schools as well as staff. This year was particularly challenging in light of the reconfiguration and all the moving that went with that. But believe it or not, there were a number of other projects that took place and were completed or are in the process of being completed. So with us this evening is Mr. Bradbury, our Director of Facilities, and he's going to take us through the presentation, eagerly assisted by his secretary, Mrs. Patty Ruffifer.
All right, I'm Pat Bradbury. I'm the Director of Facilities here for the Milford Public Schools. I'm just going to walk through the summer projects we have. We have a very short window in the summertime, about seven weeks to get bulk of this work done. Takes a lot of planning. You know, we start planning this now for next summer to get all our projects in line and everybody on staff. So we're going to go through school by school, the type of projects that were done during the year. First, we're going to start off with CAP Penmetto. All these lists are pretty much the same and they're all in handout. What we do, we started out with greeters stations at all the elementary schools and middle schools. We had these cabinets built. It gives the greeter a lockable space that the... We had these cabinets built that gives the greeter a lockable space to store their personal belongings, along with computer, the iPhone for the door, intercom, and a regular telephone. And this is where everybody, our school guard room, gets launched from here when our visitors come in. Part of our security upgrade was to install new iPhones at all the schools as a two-way communication with video. You see the camera in there, along with the call button that the greeter works with. And these also go to a couple other stations in the office in case the greeter's not there. Asbestos abatement, this is something that the public schools have been aggressively going after the past ten years that I've been here. This is another room at CAP Pen Meadow. This is the type of work we get involved with. We have to put a full containment up. This is what the inside of the classroom looks like after the abatement. You can see the concrete floors there. Now, it's all prepped. We actually removed the whiteboard, or the chalkboard in this room, for whiteboard. And then that's what it looks like when we're all done. These are patterns that are all set up. We have a pattern and a global plan at the school, so we can just pick away as we need rooms. Also, over the summer, we have the playscapes, which we're constantly upgrading. All the playscapes got a big deck. All those decks that you see there going there, they were all replaced last year. And this year, we had some, a couple things, probably some hooks, some grab bars that we replaced on all the playscapes. Kennedy, same thing. Oops, sorry. Greeter station. Some of the schools, we had to modify the design of the greeter stations to make sure we had enough egress for the kids and the staff to get out in a fire situation. So, you'll see each one's a little bit different. Same design, some are a little narrower, some are a little bigger. We also installed a new computer lab in Room Ten over there at Kennedy. And again, we went through their playscape. What we do is we have, all the playscapes are inspected on an annual basis. We get a list of possible issues that we need to take care of, and then we take care of them as soon as they come up. Live Oaks and other unique stations. This is part of the security enhancement. What we've done is we've placed these large monitors in all the principals' offices, so they can monitor the cameras during the day. They can put whatever cameras they'd like to see up there. They can have the exterior, they can have the interior. This is a new pre-K playscape that's getting ready to go in, in the back of Live Oaks School. This is as it sits right now. All the playscapes are on site. We've just installed Orchard Hills, thinking of going to Meadowside next. Live Oaks, we also, this is for the inverter, the emergency light inverter. When power goes down, it switches over to this system, which keeps the egress corridors lit for ninety minutes during a power outage. Catch basin over at Live Oaks School, it's all rotted on the inside, and we had to rebuild it and go to that. Ready-to-Learn program, they took a room over at Live Oaks School. We ended up just painting this room, changing all the ceiling tile out for them. And they're running in the back there, and they'll be using that back playscape that you just saw. Matheson School, their greeter booth, they have a little more room out there at Matheson, so we had a little more room to play around with the greeter station. They added a computer lab, which what goes on with the computer labs is, it's not just wiring that room. We're short power in the school, so we end up running a new panel. We could run a new 200-amp panel for a part of the wing, and that's really where we're getting at now. We have such a draw on the electrical systems at all the schools, because we're adding so many things to them. We had to add a panel for this one. This was a bathroom in the front. We have two bathrooms, two staff bathrooms out there, which had VCT tile on it, and we ended up putting ceramic tiles for those. Meadowside, same thing, greeter station. Part of the parking lot renovation, we had to replace this fence here. It was just worn out, this is heading to the playscape. And this starts the pictures for the parking lot renovation we did there. We spent about $515,000 to redo this lot. These are the old, existing conditions in front of the school. The portable classroom, which we were able to tie into this package to get it removed off the property. And so, this starts. This company, Westcott Makes, did the design, complete construction, did the actual construction. I think we were done the twentieth, and twenty-first is when we started to take everything, you know, the excavators were ripping this apart. It's in front of the school. This is pretty much, this was probably second week in July, we started to actually see the concrete truck down there, we're starting to pour sidewalks down there. Portable is getting ready. We had to do a hazardous abatement in there, a little bit of asbestos floor tile we had removed, so delayed a little bit there. Sorry about that. The back. This is part of the demolition. It just basically, once we clean it, once we abate it, it just goes out as clean demo into a regular dumpster. Part of the project, I also added LED lighting to the parking lots. So, we rewired the whole front two parking lots for LED. And basically, it's just a lot of coordination between contractors and all before you dig, UY, eighteen feet, but we were able to. This is the back of the property. We also, the portable is to your right, and now we're heading to the back section of the property. Sidewalk's going in. Remind you, we only have six weeks to get all this done. While you guys are at the beach. And then we start. This is all prepped, ready to go, and then we're starting to pave. And this is what the LEDs look like at night. There's still a couple old Light Night fixtures on the street that we're going to get rid of. And this is coming up from Meadowside Road up towards Bridgeport Avenue, from there with the parent drop office. Also, Meadowside, along with everybody else, got a security. This is their monitor, this sits in the principal's office. Over at Meadowside School, their cubbies, these are the metal cubbies you see there that we've replaced. Eight of them, eight rooms full of them. And you can see what they look like. They're original from when the school was built. They're starting to show a little age, so we end up pulling these all out. We had them all custom-built, and this is what they have now. So, full, for like a full-size with storage. They're also getting a new pre-K playscape, and that's how that sits right now. The hole is dug, and all before you dig is released it. They have another large playscape in the back of there that we maintain. You'll see all-new, in the springtime is when we usually add that new fiber. You'll see that's the cushion material that goes beneath the playscape. We added about 150 yards of atmosphere. Kitchen door replacement, door number two, so that was replaced. Our Japanese greeter station. Fire alarm panels we had to replace, they finally went, so we had to replace what you see in here. We replaced the fire alarm panel, along with all the peripheral devices that are out in the field, which were all addressable. All the heads, all the smoke heads were replaced, pulsations. Back to the old part of the D wing, which ties into the latest addition, we did a unit ventilator replacement project. So, underneath those windows were all the old cabinets, unit ventilators, and there's some associated piping in the back there. So, we pulled this all out and did a little bit of abatement back there, and then we installed the new unit ventilators with clip cases left and right, and a new sink in both Their playscape, they have an older playscape here, which we've done some safety, and they also have a smaller, lower-grade playscape right in the right there. Greeter station for our vehicles. They also had two rooms in the back, Rooms 28 and 29, which they ended up using for full classrooms this year, which we had to add whiteboards, cubbies, and cabinets. And so, that's what we added here. Those are all new cubbies. This is one of our staff members, Don Aronson. We're installing the whiteboards for this room. So, that's how the setup usually goes. You'll see the whiteboard goes wall to wall, and the smart board goes right on top. And that's what we're using tonight, is the same device that is there. And that's their new, lower-grade playscape that's installed, waiting for fiber. That was just installed this weekend. They also had an inverter go. So, what you see there is the old inverter on the right, new inverter on the left. That's for the emergency light system. That's their playscape. Another smaller greeter station. Part of the upgrade is all-new intrusion alarms, so all the schools have a new intrusion alarm system that we installed. At Pumpkin Delight, on the old part of the building, they have these large cast iron radiations that have been covered up, because the younger kids were getting in there, and they didn't want to get burned up in there, so we ended up removing all this radiation. This was an in-house, in other words, our staff did this. We pulled all that cast iron out and installed the new radiation with full cover on it. It just looks better, works a little better, but we did that in eight classrooms. More playscape. They already have a lower-grade setup there, so they have two playscapes. When we moved them the first time, we added a playscape to Pumpkin and West Shore and Meadowside. They just have some smaller features for the younger kids there also. Did a full inverter system there also, we're at that age, where it's going. Another tile replacement, bathroom tile on the second floor. East Shore Middle School. Not a lot happened in East Shore this year, as far as we were concerned. We added a greeter station, so all three of the middle schools received this. Just continued grounds work on replacing this front walk from the main plaza to the left of the school to get around the gymnasium. We do a lot of this work throughout the district. It's all original, and that's where it ends up looking like when we're all done. Gym floor, we resurfaced the gym floor here. This is a rubberized floor at East Shore Middle School. So, what we ended up doing, you know, we had to sand this down, remove the tape, remove everything, and then they resurfaced the whole thing. It's a two-part system. The gray is the base coat, the tan is the color, and then they add the lines after. Parkside Middle School, greeter station. Same thing, we redid the floor. They actually did this for me last year, and I wasn't happy with it. We brought them back and made them do it again. I won't pay Christmas cards for that. So, this is how they do the lines. They strike the lines with this blue tape, and then they just roll right down, whatever color they're picking out. And that's what it looks like inside. This is a life skills room we did on the basement level. This is what it looked like prior to. It was a catch-all room. And we ended up demoing, we demoed all that closet, reworked the piping, the electrical in there, same on this side. And we added this. We added a handicap sink, washer dryer setup to teach the life skills needs for that area. And then the other side is, sorry, the other side is a stove refrigerator that is, gives them the tools to practice these skills. In doing this, I added what they call an area of refuge. It's just an area that they go, that has a call station back to fire headquarters. We added this in the stairwell for them, and this is what they're set up with. We did a lot of work similar to this this summer. We had to replace the system at West Shore. We did some, with our security group, we did some renaming, so all these cooperate directly to fire dispatch, the 911 call center. Greeter booth. Security enhancements. New intrusion alarms. This here, what you see is this overhang here, these are tops. There's two setups like this down at West Shore Middle School. A couple of us have been looking at these. We haven't liked the way they look, and we ended up removing them. Thank God we did. They were not in great shape, so that's pretty much how it cleaned out. So, we took them all off of West Shore. We took, there's another one in the front we took off. And area of refuge, whole new system here. Again, this all, what this is, is the AOR, area of refuge system, that there are little call boxes in each stairwell that was labeled as one, and when they hit that button, it direct dials to 911. So, and they have signage in each stairwell that they can give to the dispatcher to tell them what part of the building they're in. And in this phone, they're able to contact and talk directly to the stairwell if they need, if fire department needs. And that's the wall there. This is in West Shore Middle School, this is in the courtyard. If you remember, two years ago, I had to go into the courtyard to go after some heating lines and a direct burial out there. Well, two other lines let go over the summer. So, over the, actually, last winter, we were able to band-aid them. So, this will get rectified with the renovation that goes on there, because we'll probably abandon this type of system. But we end up having to re-pipe the hot water, hot supply and return line for the hot water heating system on the pod side of the building, which is the media center, gymnasium, and a couple classrooms over there. But as you can see, there's a little traffic through the courtyard that we have to work through. On this particular side of the trench is just grease trap and sewer lines. This is the old section, because we've already been in this, and we've already replaced all this piping in here. These are all steam lines that go in. There's steam lines, conduit, hot water, cold water, research lines. So, it's just a real busy area. It's never fun. And that's what it looks like today with passengers. A lot of the academy this year, just their security upgrades. They have new action, new intrusion alarms, new monitor for the principal. They also have another device here. You see the blue light, which will indicate if they have an open door during the day. Somebody's trying to leave early. Foreign High School is our list here. We resurfaced the, holly the gymnasium floor. This is for the pool unit. We had to install a new chlorinator. This device here always gives us the chlorination level, along with the pH that's going on in the pool. Our guys check this three times a day. But this is a whole new system. We also installed a new scoreboard for the swim team that was donated. They donate the board, and we do all the infrastructure to get it hung. And this is the board with the piping. More sidewalk replacement up at Foreign High School. This is a section of asphalt sidewalk that we replaced. We buy all this off the city bid. This is the photo lab in the back, third floor. This used to be the old print shop, and we've converted this to art photo lab or something. Well, we re-tiled the floor, moved some data lines. It was set up as a computer room, excuse me, last year. So, now it's just one big room. Last year, we had it set up as two rooms, and now this year it's one main room. This is the darkroom. During the, this is tied to that room also. During the final asbestos abatement, the darkroom was involved in this. We ended up, the city did the floor tile and ceiling tile, and our staff is doing those in larger tables. We're building those now in the back and installing those. Cafeteria tables, we finished this project. The project is we just bought new tables. But before, you see the old round tables and chairs. Our guys would have to break these down every day, set them up, mop the floor, move them to the left. So, finally, after ten years, we were able to get movable tables, fold-up tables, so they can, we can clean them, we can run the machine through here. We can run the machine through here. It's just an easier setup. Makes it just a lot nicer and cleaner for the guys. This is some, part of, this is down by the football field. This is to the left, I had to re-asphalt a large section down here. It just finally gave way. When they built Foreign High School, they really didn't, and all the asphalt. When I did the tennis courts, I found the same scenario. They pulled the topsoil, got down to the clay, and then they put the asphalt right on top of that. Just, it's really wet, it doesn't hold up. And so once we started driving over this with the turf project, the replacement project, it finally let go. And this is what we have. You see, we're putting in the, all that is the new process that's going in. And then all below, you see the wet clay. That, that was directly below the asphalt. And this is what it looks like today. So now, this is just a plan for Foreign High School. What we did this year is we did the green wing, which is this section here. What we did is we pulled all the classrooms out and we did a full tile abatement and ceiling replacement in all of those classrooms. So what that involves is, one, we have to empty it. And so we had Myers, we had four trailers, four trailers? We had four trailers on the property loaded with all the classroom furniture. And this is the overflow. We threw all the furniture out in the trailers and then we kept all the incidentals, all the box material that comes out of the classroom. We grabbed the room up there and we just stored it inside for the summer. And this is during the abatement. Ceilings are out, floors are out. And this is, sorry, it's dark, but we had it powered. And this is what it looks like when we're all done. We had, we had the floors redone, ceilings redone, and then we were able to paint all the classroom walls, radiators. Remember, seven weeks. This is the field, this is the turf field replacement. This started the day after graduation. What they do here is this is the field getting rolled up. They've actually pulled the playing surface up. They rolled it up, they've labeled it, and they're shipping it somewhere. This is how it looks like. This is how they do it. They roll up all the sections of turf as it goes across the field. This is as it's starting to go back down. The turf comes without numbers, hash marks, anything on it. It's just green with the stripes. That's all that comes, every 10 yards. So this is after, what they do now is they have the whole thing laid out. They're going to stretch it. All those bags there, those are the, those are the infill product that goes into the turf. There's probably 50 of these bags, 75 of these bags. They lift these with that tow motor that's behind it, put in a big hopper and spread it around. This is how they cut in the hash marks. You see that sled in the center there? That goes from 10 yards to 10 yards and they actually go back in. They cut all the hash marks out of the turf and then glue all the hash marks in. And that's the logo that is in the center of the Foreign High School field. We did some baseball improvements. We're actually, you know, it's a, it's a yearly issue that we, we work on all the grass fields. We end up doing a lot of lift work, which is where the clay meets the grass. We had wear spots from the summer, so we pretty much patch and cut everything back there. This is our sprinkler. This was, this is the irrigation shed on the back of the, of the back of the field house. And we ended up having to replace this. This was a wood structure, which was added after the building was built. And we just reworked it with some block. And that's how it sits there. This is what we do for the pole lights. We have to, this year we did whole fields. We had to, you know, take care of the valves and bolts that are out. Fortunately, they're so high, we have a tough time getting to the top. So this lift gets them 60 feet. That's the max that it'll lift and they climb the rest of the way. They can't get a larger lift down there because we don't want them to drive over the tracks, but it's not an easy. The kitchen, we ended up painting the entire kitchen, both the kitchen area and the storage area. This is the storage area. Just we have to empty it. Jonathan Law. Same thing, the old gym, we refinished the old gym. This is a new irrigation pump. Might not mean anything to you guys, it's pretty exciting to me. So this is a vertical pump. We've always had trouble with this setup down at Law. It's below the pond. So if we lose any type of power down there, this pit fills up with water and we usually lose the old pump. This is now a submersible pump, which we should be pretty good with. Part of the upgrade, this is the press box that controls all the accessing and out of buildings. The gray box below it is what controls the strikes. And that's just another switch gear in the top there that monitors cameras. At Law, we also had to replace a few of the foils in this, this area here. We're just swinging the foils in and out. Replaced a set of doors for the media center. And we redid the press box. So this has been a lengthy process to get the permits and everything going and pick the window of time that we could do it. This is the old press box. This is the demolition. And this is as it starts to go back up. And this is what it looks like today. And this is the view from the press box up top. And what we did with this, what we do every year to help with the compaction of the fields is we have somebody come in and they vacuum the entire field. And what that does, you've probably seen the picture of the guy driving around on the little machine. It sucks up all the infill, takes out all the garbage, and helps with compaction. We did, this is Law softball field. We did both Law, the softball and the baseball field this year. Lift work, lighting work. Parsons. Parsons, we installed a generator here at Parsons to run our IT department. We have a large closet here that operates the entire district network. And so if we lose power or the building blows, we're covered to at least keep the rest of the school going. This is a big shred day here at the Parsons complex. So what we do is, all this comes in from all the schools. We have pathway on the tow motor. We have these, these two trucks come in and we shred all the material. This here is Mr. Bill Springsteen. Bill Springsteen retired in 1992. And he had Jeff's job driving the tow motor. He ran our shop. I just want to take a minute. Bill is now 78 years old. And Bill comes in every summer. He's come in every summer that he's been retired to help out with the warehouse and whatnot. And I think when Jeff retires, Bill's going to reapply for the job. Bill's out working Jeff right about now. He loves it. He's one of the people, you meet, you meet a couple of these people in your lifetime. That every time you see him, he's got that smile on his face. He's laughing, he's fun. He's a veteran, just a great guy. He's a treasure that we've had in the maintenance department. Got to work with him for all these years. But just a real good guy. Reconfiguration, okay. We've worked on this since the springtime. We started to get this in motion. So what this entailed, we hired Myers Moving to help actually do the physical move for us. And what we had, at the elementary school, we had 20 trailers on the property. We usually would have three or four each site loaded up to whatever destination it was going to. Foreign High School, we had four other trailers. I had four swing trailers up at Eels Hill. What the swing trailers refer were the excess materials, stuff I couldn't get the decision on. And then we were able to pull through all that. We went through about 10,000 moving boxes. Went through about 200 of these large C bins, which are just larger boxes. And we ended up making 24,000 labels in our department to label everything that was going somewhere. This is, trying to bring back nightmares. This is, this is what started the process. What this is, is a Google document. This is a live document that we used all summer long. And I was the one that had to keep driving this to make sure that we got accurate information on here because this is how our movement goes. So on the left side, this, this document is set up right now of where everybody is. So we'd go to these redistricting meetings and I need to know where everybody was. So what we were able to do is it tells us where they were, what grade they taught, where they were going. It also would tell me if they were getting split. So maybe they were going to Matheson, but their curriculum was going to Meadowside. So we had to keep track of all that. So we use this, this, this is how we did it. We use this, this document. We flip it. Once everything was loaded up, we would flip it and give it back to movers and then they knew where everything would go. In my office, we also had these colored documents of the plans of each school. Blue was staying. Yellow was an internal move. Green was going.
Correct.
External moves. So this is how everything was set up. So we had, we started to lay this out in picture form so everybody could understand what was happening. Then we'd go around, we labeled every classroom by the classroom door with a color of what it was doing. Was it staying? Was it going? Yellow's internal, green's going, or yellow's internal move, green is going, and blue is something else. But that's how we did this. And then once everything got loaded up, so what we would do here, we had this new plan. This is how the school would look after everything was out. So we took all the internal moves and we moved them to the gym. All the external moves went on the trailers. So this was just constant motion all, all summer long. Boxes. Boxes. And this is what a classroom would look like when sometimes we'd come into it. You know, this is what we have to pack up. Teachers did most of the packing, but this is what we're dealing with. This is what we're dealing with. Teachers had to pack up all their rooms, get them organized, get them labeled. It was not an easy process. The staff was unbelievable. They all, you know, came to the plate to get this done. But this room would get totally packed up and moved on. This is a room after it's been packed. All the curriculum materials in the boxes. Everything's labeled, every chair, every desk, every box. Hopefully labeled correctly. And this is how we got them. We had them all color coordinated. Trailers, Myers. And Myers, these guys would come, you know, they were constantly running it in August. Because we had all these, we had them coming back for the gyms because we'd have all this extra material, mislabeled material. So they were, they were phenomenal to keep this going. This is another room packed though. I think this room ended up turning into a computer lab. This is room 10 minutes. This one here, this is what our gyms look like. You can see they're all cardboard off, what room is where. So this is all summer. All summer, we're getting calls, where's my stuff? And it all worked out. We were... This is it, done. Those dogs have to. That's it. That's what we did. The guys did a great job. Our staff was phenomenal. Teachers were phenomenal. It was a lot of work, but Drufford has played a big role in that, as she does every year. She keeps it all organized for us. We're very fortunate to have her. It's another one. We're very lucky. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bradbury? Mr. Whiskeman?
Actually, through you, to Mr. Richatelli. Mr. Bradbury mentioned the increasing demand for electric service in the various buildings. And we have noted that we have, we have saved a lot of money on electric through the program that we put in place. So I was just wondering if we could speak to that for a little bit about how we are still managing to save money even though we're drawing a lot more electric to the buildings.
Well, it's, it's, it's because we're constantly, and we've talked about this before. We'll have an energy report coming up, you know, for the new board. But it's, it's constant vigilance. That's, that's really all it is. It's just constant vigilance. And we said at some point, we're going to level off. The savings isn't going to keep, we're not going to keep going down, down, down. It's going to level off. And you eventually hit a peak. We also are constantly looking at the electric market. We're in a consortium so that we, when, when the timing is right, we will go out to bid, we'll shop the market. And we're constantly looking for the lowest prices on electricity. So we just locked into a new contract that will begin in '16? '16 and '17, which is lower, our price is, is lower than before. And that's for the transmission. To tran-
Generation.
Generation, okay. And we buy that, right now we're TransCanada, but I think we're going to Constellation, which is, you know, it's, it's different companies. We're still locked into UI for-
Distribution.
Distribution, thank you. And, and those prices continue to rise. So it's, we're constantly watching the market. We're constantly staying vigilant with our energy conservation program. And, and as I said, at some point, we're going to level off. On, on heating, I know, we don't really want to digress too far from electricity. But the, the heating prices are rising dramatically for natural gas. And you're going to see that at budget time. So that's, and we're doing the same things with the energy conservation program, always looking to save, save, save. But there's only a point where you can, you can only save so much. And then when the price continues to rise, you're not going to see the savings that we've had before. Overall, the program continues to be very successful.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Bradbury? Yes, Mr. Weiss?
I have no question, but once again, a phenomenal job you guys do during summer. I don't know how you get it all done, but every year you do. I always look forward to watching this.
We enjoy putting it on. We really, when we put it together, it's, we really don't realize, you know, we start outgoing. And it's not until we really put the whole list together and we realize, we get a lot of work done.
Yeah, you do.
And it's, doing this project, you know, doing this presentation really helps me digest that. It just creates more work.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bradbury, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all your hard work. I want to commend you on the Meadowside parking lot. While I wasn't there working on it, I was driving by it every day on my way to work or my way to the beach. And I was asking Mr. Richatelli at every single board meeting, is it going to be ready? And it was ready and it, and it looks phenomenal. I have a question about the Meadowside playscape.
Yes.
That we're putting in a pre-K playscape.
I said wrong.
Okay.
Lower grade.
Just lower grade.
Lower grade, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't mean to say, no, lower grade.
So we're lining up pre-K playscapes where we have pre-K students, right? Okay. Okay, thank you. And then a question probably for Mr. Richatelli or Mr. Bradbury. How do you determine, in this, this sheet that we're on now, how do you determine which budget year a project, the cost comes out of? It's a mix.
Yes. There's, there's, yes. There is, there is a mix in there. So what happens is a lot of times I can't get the projects done. I can't squeeze them in in time. By the time we get the budget going in July 1st, I can't get them done that summer. So they get held over to the next, the deal with, we'll say the Jonathan Law press box. We had some permitting issues there and we couldn't get things to coordinate last year with the turf replacement. That was my plan for that. So it might get pushed back a year.
Okay.
And if I have an opening at a school where I don't have summer school or something going on, and if I can jump on a project that starts July 1st in that budget, I'd usually try and get that in. It really, it kind of revolves around when I get in and, and how I'm progressing that I can get it done in that summer.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Yeah. Could we get a subtotal of these projects of which came out of which budget year? Just a, just a total amount from each budget year?
From each budget year?
Yeah. And then maybe a summary of what's held over? If there is anything held over in the current budget?
Just to dovetail off of that, the dollars are, are they encumbered? Like the $14, $15, you encumber them, so they're sitting there?
Right. It has to be for a specific project. And most times it has to be for, it's, it's already bid out or it's for a specific vendor. So a purchase order is cut and the encumbrance is there. And it can sit there until the project's done.
Okay.
But it can't go to anything else. If there's, if we have a project and it, for some reason it doesn't get done, that money lapses back to the city.
Any other questions? Dr. Goldorkin?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Richatelli. We brought this up before to-
Through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Richatelli. We brought this up before to have you consider solar energy. And now, I know the state has some incentives for major projects, and they are energy saving. So, has anything been done to look into that?
Yes. We are in the process of working with an engineering firm to put an RFP together for a
We're going to do an energy
Yeah, an energy audit, so to speak. So that, the board has put aside, as you know, about $125,000 for additional energy infrastructure in order to enhance savings. But we first want to find out what's the best, where's the most need, and how can we best use that money that the board has put aside for us. So the best way to do that is through an energy audit. We, with putting on the new roofs at the elementary schools, that will give us an opportunity to look into solar. We can't put the solar on the roofs until the roofs are redone. So that's about a year away. Four of the roofs hopefully will be done next summer, if it's approved in the capital improvement plan in the city, and then four the following year. And then, that gives us the opportunity. So we're still about a year away from any decision that we could possibly make on solar. But we need that energy audit first to tell us what's, how we can best capitalize on the monies that we have.
Other questions?
Yes, Sue?
Yes, Mr. DeRosa?
Yes, through you, to Mr. Richatelli and Pat Bradbury. I don't know if you guys can hear me all right?
Yep, loud and clear.
I just want to commend you for the efforts that you did, and the amount of work you did over the summer, getting the school system ready for this year. I know it's a great undertaking, a lot of coordination and effort, a lot of resources. After having done that myself for a place at work, you know, merging three buildings into one, I just want to commend you again for the efforts and the energy that you now say that's behind us, and, you know, making the kids' lives a better experience in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done then?
Just one last kudos. Congratulations. Thank you. It was a monumental effort, and it's phenomenal. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the next item on the agenda is the annual athletic program financial report. Each year, Mr. Richatelli provides to you the annual report on athletics. So this would be for the 2014-15 school year, because right now, we're in the midst, we're basically one-third of the way through athletics. So this would be from last year. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Richatelli.
Thank you, Dr. Pizer, Mrs. Glendon, members of the board. I don't know if my presentation will be as entertaining as Mr. Bradbury's was, but each year, we come to you and we give you the basics of how athletic financing in our school district works. With us tonight is DJ Cerulo, who's the Athletic Director at Jonathan Law. Mr. Richatelli, Athletic Director at Foreign, is attending one of the games, one of his teams made the state tournament, and he's attending the game. So Mr. Richatelli won't be able to be here tonight, but Mr. Cerulo certainly can help me, correct me if I mess anything up, and answer any questions that the board has. So, a lot of this you've probably seen before, it doesn't change very much, but Milford Public Schools, we offer participation in 24 sports that are sanctioned by the CIAC, or the Connecticut International Athletic Conference. We painstakingly look to equalize and to make sure that there's equity between the two programs at Jonathan Law and Foreign. And just to remind you that this is the general review of the finances of the athletic program. There's so many other components to athletics in our schools, but this is basically the finances. In addition to the 24 sanctioned sports, we also offer many other athletic-related opportunities in the school system. Just to name a few, Unified Sports, Powder Puff, we have a fencing club now. And there's so many other opportunities for the students other than athletics, but we're concentrating on athletics. Just to go into a couple of these programs, Unified Sports is, it's a registered program of Special Olympics. It partners students with intellectual disabilities with typical students who are their partners. Runs throughout the school year at the high school and middle school levels. And there's competition in soccer, basketball, volleyball, softball, and bowling. And there are approximately between 80 and 90 students that participate in the Unified Sports programs. Powder Puff, it's the annual night before Thanksgiving. It's girls' flag football. Up to 50 girls at Foreign and Law participate. It's not a sanctioned sport, obviously, but it's a great source of fun and pride. And believe me when I tell you, the girls take it very seriously. The cost of the event, the costs of that event are paid for by the games receipts, and anything that's left over is included in the sports or the athletic game day operations Athletic financing is basically, there are two accounts or funds that athletic money's going to. It's the general funds, which your board appropriates in the general operating budget. And then, there's the athletic activity accounts. And we're going to go into what makes up those two funds. The general fund, as I said, it's the monies that you assign to athletics in the budget. It's in several different categories. It's in salaries, the coaches' salaries. It's in the transportation accounts for athletic transportation. We pay for athletic trainers and contracted services. Obviously, we have insurance. Equipment and supplies comes out of the actual athletic funds at the two high schools. And of course, we pay for equipment, uniforms, and the like. The athletic activity account, these are primarily generated by ticket sales and athletic events. And they generally pay for expenses that you would typically think of as game day operations. The officials, the referees, the part-time staff, like ticket takers, announcers, scorekeepers, things like that. Police officers or security that are hired for those game days. That's where, basically, that's where the money in the athletic account is basically used for, game day operations. Each year, the board has supplemented the athletic activities accounts from the general fund. And you'll see that in your budget book, how it's separated out, because we need to, we need to supplement the game day operations, because ticket sales are not sufficient to cover all of the game day operations. And the gap continues to grow. There's, we're going to talk a little bit more about gate receipts and why the gap will continue to grow in a couple of slides in a few minutes. But this is basically, this is the breakdown of the general funds in the athletic accounts. So you can see that this is what was actually spent in 2014, 2015. Jonathan Law, in their regular athletic account, spent, and I won't go through each number, but about $88,500. The game day operations at both schools, as I said, you supplement from the general fund. Last year, $15,500 that you supplement for game day operations. Foreign spent a little bit more than Law last year. And then, hockey. Hockey is administered by the Athletic Director at Jonathan Law, but we separate it out, because it's students from both Foreign, Law, and Platte Tech. Then, student, athletic transportation, we paid $189,340. Coaches' salaries, close to a half a million dollars. The athletic trainers, which we have, we subcontract out for, $102,000. And our athletic insurance, $33,690. For total general fund expenditures in athletics of $1,061,343. Okay. Revenue in the athletic activities accounts. Ticket sales from both schools last year amounted to $98,704. Game day operations, you supplemented from the board's general fund at $31,000. And there was miscellaneous fundraising donations which took place for a total in the athletic activities account of $132,481. Total expenditures, this is just a further breakdown of where the funds were spent, and this is out of both accounts. Again, coaches were a half a million dollars. We already went through some of these, transportation, officials, referees, and part-time staff, the athletic trainers, and, you know, and the list goes down. I don't, they're in front of you, they're in your PowerPoint, so you can see where those dollars were spent. So back to ticket sales. Relying upon, relying upon a variable source of revenue to fund fixed costs. We know what it's going to cost us to run a football game. We know what it's going to cost us to run a basketball game. But we don't know what we're going to take in that day at the gate. It can vary greatly depending on the game's opponents. You know, if it's a strong opponent, or if it's a rival, you're going to get more people, and you're going to collect more money. Weather conditions, the current success of the team, sometimes if a team is on a roll, you know, you get more support, and the gate receipts are bigger. So you can see that many different things can affect the gate receipts on any given year at either of the two high schools. So regardless of how many people pass through the gate, the game will be played, and it has to be funded. And we know what those funds are going to be, but we don't know what we're going to collect at the gate. Weather's a huge one. If, you know, if you have a Friday night football game, and it's pouring rain out, chances are, your game is going to be small. And when you only have five home football games, which football is the biggest gate generator, you can see how that can greatly affect gate receipts on any given sport at either of the two schools. So as I said before, the cost of the game day operations continues to rise each year, but the gate receipts basically are maxed out, and only vary slowly from year to year, as you will see. This is what we took in in 14-15. As you can see, football is the biggest generator, as I said. You can see the breakdown, and you can see that both schools, you know, are really close to one another in what they take in in gate receipts, but they vary from sport to sport. Some, and it depends, again. You know, if one of the schools has a, you know, is having a real successful season in one sport, and the others isn't, it can, that can go back and forth year to year. But overall, it's pretty close. And total ticket sales, $92,461. And this is just a comparison over the years for gate receipts history, dating back to 2010, 2011. And as you can see, it doesn't vary, it doesn't vary all that much. I would point out to you, the asterisk there in 13-14, that was the first year that ticket sales were collected for hockey and boys' lacrosse. We now only collect for girls' lacrosse, I believe.
Yep.
Yep, okay. So you can see, there was a big jump in 13-14 of about $10,000 over the previous year. And that was because we started collecting the gate receipts for hockey and lacrosse. So now, we'll get into student participation by sport, and it's broken down by the individual seasons. So again, you know, we won't go through each of the numbers, but you can see how many students participated in each of the sports in each of the seasons. Expense by sport. And, you know, we just took the, you know, what are, what's the overall expense for each of the sports? Again, football is the most expensive, and then, you know, you go down to girls' tennis. Yeah, hockey's expensive. And on the low side, girls' tennis, boys' tennis at 24, a little more than 24, $25,000. So you can see what we spend by each sport. Cost per student by sport, and obviously, this is what we spent divided by the number of participants. So, again, well, hockey is the most expensive. And then, football's up there. Boy's swimming is up there. And that could be, I think, boy's swimming is up there because there's so few participants. And so, you have the amount that we spend, but you're dividing it by less participants. So we won't, the numbers are there for you to look at, and for use at your convenience. We always mention hockey, because it's a little bit of an anomaly. In 14-15, the board increased funding for the hockey program. It also added an assistant coach, additional ice time, and additional monies for transportation. The board made a decision back then that they were going to get closer to fully funding the hockey program. Right, and as you can see, well, first, the participants, there are 10 students, this was in 14-15, 10 students from Law, 13 from Foreign, and four from Platte. Player participation fee, which is whatever it costs for hockey, minus what the board has funded, then the participants needed to fundraise. And as you can see, in the 2012-2013 season, each player was either fundraising or paying out of pocket $850. With the board's support and increasing funding for hockey, you can see how that has dropped. In 13-14, which was that first year, it went down to $233. So the parents were greatly appreciative of the additional support that the board put in. It went up slightly in 14-15, because I believe we had a major reconditioning of equipment that we had to do. So it went up slightly, the cost per player. But it's estimated next year that the cost will come down to about $200 a player. So it's getting closer to that fully funding where the board's goal was a few years ago. Platte Tech pays $600 per player toward their contribution. And as I already said, the hockey program is administered by the Jonathan Law A.D. And it wasn't that DJ and Anthony flipped a coin, it was basically that Foreign has the pool. And so, we thought, you know, Anthony had those additional responsibilities with the pool, so DJ inherited hockey. But I know he loved it.
Loved it.
That's right. And as I already said, a goal of the board in the past has been to fully fund the program over time. Girls' hockey. We do not have a girls' hockey program, but similar to the co-op program that we host, our girls are eligible to play on the Notre Dame High School of Fairfield co-op team. So, students from Foreign, Law are both eligible to participate. The participation fee that Notre Dame has put on the girls is $1,500 per player. Up until now, the parents have paid $1,500. But we thought it was only equitable for, since we're fully, close to fully funding the boys' program, that we would pay the same fee that Platte Tech is paying to us to subsidize the girls who are from Milford Public Schools. As you can see, it's a very small number. In 14-15, there were only two girls who played on the co-op team, and we did not contribute in 14-15. But we have made a commitment that for the 15-16 season, that we would pay the $600, similar to how Platte pays our co-op team. And it's anticipated, I just talked to the girls' hockey coach from Notre Dame, and it's anticipated that she'll have three girls from Milford Public Schools this year. So that will be included in our budget. That's it. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to answer any questions.
Whiskeman?
When you talk about the costs of expenses by sport, does, I presume that does not include the investment in capital expenditures necessary to play the game? That, that's, that's the transactional costs as they occur, just, just not, not the full accounting costs? They're really just a cost for each participant?
Yeah, it's, it's those expenses that, that I had on the screen. Everything, you know, it's, it's the uniforms, it's the, the equipment, it's the game day operations. All of the expenses that I listed, that's what goes into the expense by sport.
For, for tennis, for example, we have a few of our, I believe we have a couple of tennis courts.
Yep.
But do we also use the city tennis courts in addition to the school ones?
No, I don't think so.
Just, just around?
Yeah, correct.
Oh, okay. So the capital investment in whatever athletic fields there are are not accounted for out of this?
Correct.
But are dealt with separately?
Correct. Like, like the perfect placement program was over a million dollars, that was in the capital improvement plan, wouldn't be reflected.
It's just a, you know, just an understanding of, we're dealing here with the, with, with just the actual individual expenses, it's not the capital costs.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Richatelli. I have a few questions. The first one is just financially, you mentioned the different game day operations. Where does the money from concessions go at the football games?
And VJ, again, correct me, but it's the booster club or the sports association? Law has a sports association, foreign has the booster club. They run it and the concession goes to them.
Okay, so it's completely outside of?
Yes.
Here, okay. My next question is, are there any changes that you would be recommending or that you're going to look at in the future or considering either expansion of programs or cost savings? Anything in either direction coming up?
No, not at this time. I mean, there have been calls from time to time for different sports to become varsity sports, but there's, there, the last time we added a sport was lacrosse. And there was a tremendous number of participants who were committed to the program. I mean, we, well, the numbers are up there, how many, how many students participated lacrosse. And so it was decided by the board at that time to bring lacrosse on as a varsity, or as a sport in the school system, both for boys and girls. So from time to time, people have come to us and say, we'd like to, you know, start this type of team. And I'm not going to say which, you know, which ones they are. But, but there just isn't the call for it. And so I don't believe that we have any plans to bring anything forward or recommend anything in the coming future.
Okay. And the volleyball, that's girls only, right?
Correct.
Okay. Has there ever been a call for boys? Has it ever been?
I've never heard.
Considered?
I know there are some schools that have boys volleyball.
I know there are some that have.
But there's not many.
Yeah, that's, it's probably the smallest sport as far as number of schools in the state that the C I A C sponsors.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Other questions? I had one question. I noticed that there's a difference between page six and seven in the ticket sales total. Page six, it's $98,704 and on page seven, it's $92,461.
My pages aren't the same as yours.
Oh, slide 11 and slide 14?
We'll clarify it for you. We made, we made some adjustments this morning, and I believe that the $92,000 is correct, but we'll clarify that for you.
Okay, thank you.
It was, it was the way that we were accounting for, Anthony and VJ were on the phone with me this morning, and it was how we were accounting for the football, the Thanksgiving football game and the powder puff game. And the way it works is whoever's the host team, so, so whoever's the host team takes the gate receipts and then pays out all the game day expenses, and then they split whatever's left over. And what was happening was one school was putting down their, their split or the piece of the pie. The other school was putting the full amount that they had collected.
Okay.
And so it was, we had to correct it to make sure that both schools were accounting for it the same way. And so we made an adjustment in the slide today, and I think one of them, and I'm certain that it was the $92,000 is the adjustment that we made to correct it, but we'll definitely get that answer to you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on the athletic report? Any questions from you, John?
No, Sue.
Okay. All right.
Well, I do have one question, and maybe this is to you, to Mr. Richatelli. Has there ever been a discussion about having any middle school sports sponsored by the schools? I know one time we did, and we no longer do that anymore. I'd be curious to find out what the enrollment is for freshman teams and to see how much money's spent there. And maybe that could be used to create a feeder program in the middle schools.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you that since I've been here, there have not been any middle school sports. I know at one time there was, but I believe it was only basketball. And that goes back quite a few years now. So, and I don't, you know, it's, obviously it's a budgetary issue, and I have not heard that come up, you know, during, during our budget discussions, that there was a call for middle school sports. Freshman numbers, VJ, I know that we've talked, the numbers are getting thin.
Sure.
Probably in some sports more than others, but maybe you could address the freshman numbers.
Sure.
Not specifically, but.
Right. I would say as you can see, continue to see the enrollment drop, you will see some of our numbers drop as far as actual participation. Overall, our freshman programs, you know, I could just speak to Jonathan Law, are strong. We don't, we don't want for freshman sports and every sport that we offer, we offer it in football, boys and girls basketball, and baseball and softball. So those are the sports that we offer, freshman sports, the others we offer JV and varsity. You know, the one thing I would say is if you were to, at some point down the road, add middle school sports, it would also be important to keep the freshman sports and keep that continuity from one level to the other. So I don't think, you know, eliminating freshman sports and using that money to sponsor middle school sports would work. I think it would be even more important to have the, to keep the freshman level if you were to add middle school sports at some point down the line. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the second reading of the transportation policy, which includes the proposed revision to student walking distance, specifically scenario two, which includes reducing the walking distance for both high school and middle school students. I don't know if you want Mr. Richatelli to talk in more detail about that, or if the board is familiar with what is being proposed, which is really what you asked, to redesign the policy so that it would reflect the scenario.
So board members, do you have anything that you wanted to address, Mr. Richatelli?
No, just, there was, no, no, at this point, you know, we can answer any questions, but I think we've been, we've been over the numbers. Do you want me to, to answer any questions?
Okay. I just want to point out, there was one kind of housekeeping addition made that was brought up at leadership, and that was just to clarify that if the change goes through, it's for the 2016, '17 school year, so that was added to the, to the language. You know, if there are additional questions board members want to ask, we can maybe ask them first. If not, I'll call for a motion so that we can discuss our own, you know, thoughts and rationale. Were there any other questions specific to the, any of the information that Mr. Richatelli has shared with us over the last couple of meetings? No?
Madam Chair, make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the revised transportation policy, P.3541, as presented by administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Numerous seconds. Mr., that's okay. Mr. Cicelli. All right, discussion on the motion. Yes, Mrs. Federico?
I'll offer a comment. As many parents have reminded us tonight, our vision is to prepare our students to achieve at their highest level. We already know that a 1.9 mile walk is 40 minutes for an adult. We know that when you add a, when you consider a high school freshman and you add a backpack and you add inclement weather, that walk could take longer than 40 minutes. We're talking about a walk that takes place, you know, between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. in cold weather. And I know we have a lot of students walking in cold weather, I get that, but when you're walking 40 minutes and you're freezing cold, that's, that's another level of harshness that I just really feel that when those students get to school, they are not going to be prepared to achieve at their highest level. They're not going to be as prepared to achieve as their peers who've had a 20 or 30 minute bus ride. So I think that, you know, we've heard a lot of different concerns and issues that have come up on this topic, and I think that we have the solution right in front of us. And we need to shorten this walking distance for both the high school and the middle school students, because it's the same thing for middle school. If you're starting with a 30-minute walk for an 11-year-old student and you add a backpack and you add the things like the weather, that's a very taxing walk for them as well. Both the distances are too far and too taxing on our students. And we learned in our materials that were presented to us a few meetings ago, that there are 24 other districts in the state that have walking distances shorter than ours for high school. That was 42% of the districts surveyed, and I think that we should join them and shorten our walking distances.
Other comments? Okay, I'll, I'll offer my own comments then. So I, I'll share with the board that I have really struggled with this decision over the past couple of months, and I have listened to a lot of discussion between the public comment that we've had and, as well as others in the community, because we are, as a board, we do represent the citizens and the taxpayers as well. That's in our policy. I agree that two miles is too far, but I, I believe that the board has addressed that with our opt-in provision. And we have, every, every person that I've heard speak over the past couple of months does have the opt-in provision at their, their disposal. And I believe that all of the families do get on a bus as of October 1st. So it's one month that I'm hearing is, is the concern really for parents, is that they have to wait that month. Because otherwise, they are getting a bus. I have concern about spending almost a quarter of a million dollars to transport, you know, the numbers say 250, but we know that half, half of the ridership of the high, in the high school students, they don't take the bus. And I have, I have walked the areas, I have, I have driven around in the morning to see, you know, how many students really are walking. And I think, you know, while we can't measure, we have no way to really measure how many students are walking. Anecdotally, I see that it's not a lot of students. I think most students are getting a ride. If there was more widespread support for this change across the community, I would vote in favor of it. But as it stands right now, I cannot, I can't support it at this time, because I think that if we're going to spend a quarter of a million dollars, I'd rather see the money being spent on programs that are directly going on in the schools. You know, we, it is our responsibility to prepare students to achieve at their highest level. In my opinion, our responsibility lies more with what's going on in the schools. Parents have a responsibility too. Parents have a responsibility to make sure their children are getting a good night's sleep, having a good breakfast in the morning. And if it means, you know, if the parent feels that they don't want their child to walk to school, parents have an option to provide other means of transportation. My children, we never qualified for a bus except for the three years we were in middle school. And I was a single parent, I had three little kids, and I made it work, whether it was neighbors or other family members. You know, I had agreements with my kids, if you wanted a ride in the morning, you had to be ready to go to school at a certain time, otherwise you're on your own, you can walk or see if you can get a ride with someone else. Coming home, they often had to wait until I could pick them up when they were done with their evening activities and, or their, you know, after-school activities. And the public transportation was always an option for them. You know, they knew that they could get on the bus and get a bus ride home. And I always made sure that they had enough money to pay that bus fare, if that's, if that's the option that they needed to use for that day. So we made it work. You know, the prior board did a lot of, did a lot of, a lot of investigation and a lot of, spent a lot of time on the transportation policy. And not once did any parent come forward and say to us, and Mr. Weiss can attest to that, Mr. Whiskeman can attest to that, not once did a parent come before us and say, you know what, while you're looking at transportation, I think you should look at shortening the walking distances. We're not hearing widespread requests for this from the community. We're hearing from it, from some very distinct neighborhoods who, yes, they did lose their bus when we, when we did the audit and we, we saw that there were certain pockets, certain areas in town where the students were taking the bus when they really didn't meet the criteria for that accommodation. We, the walking distance, we are not looking, the walking distance was never a mile and a half for high school, I do want to clarify that. It's always been the two miles for high school. And I take the safety of our children very seriously, but I, you know, I think that our responsibility, and it's, it's dated in the policies, once they get on the bus or once they get, get to school. I think parents share in the responsibility for what happens before then, and it's really up to the parents to decide how it is they feel their child should get to school. So at this juncture, I, you know, we have college and career pathways that we are looking at to administration to have ready to pilot one or two come September. Those are going to cost money. I really, you know, would rather see the funds, if we're going to be spending that kind of money, quarter of a million dollars, I'd rather see it going towards activities, educational, directly related to education of students in the school during the school day. So that's my, but I have, I have listened. I listened, I also listened to the, the community as I was walking this summer, and, you know, I didn't hear any of the widespread support that I heard. I heard everybody, you know, thanked us for going back to the K-5. And our community supported that to the tune of $2 million, going back to K-5. And there's widespread support of that. The few people that mentioned supporting the walking distances, they, they had grandchildren in, in high school. But I, I did have numerous parents, numerous taxpayers say to me, you know, they're concerned about taxes. And they, they don't, they don't have children in the school system, yet they are supporting the school system with their taxes. And some of them were, were pretty adamant that, you know what, this is not the time to be, to be adding a quarter of a million dollars for, for really what, one parent at a PTA council meeting called it a service, a service for parents. And in a, in a way that is, is, you know, I, I found that interesting that a parent viewed it that way. And it made me stop and, you know, think some more about it. But I, I have given this a lot of consideration over the last few months. So, yes, Dr. Gold, again?
Yeah, I want to thank Erin Blenin for what she just said, because I too have struggled with the issue, listening to the parents who have come here. Some of the same parents have come several times to ask us to look at it. I think that it's really important, as I said the first time the issue came up, that one of the number one problems for children in our society is that they're not getting enough exercise. So in light of what Mr. DeRosa said about athletics in middle school, I think that, you know, having the children do more exercise as part of their day is critical. I think- I think that, you know, children walking 20 or 40 minutes a day, it actually helps to clear their mind so that then they can, you know, function a little bit better in school situations. So I think that any increase of $250,000 for the district, there are lots of things that are needed in the classrooms, and any funding should go for, for education expenses and not for, for transportation. So I would not be supporting this at this time.
Any other comments?
Yeah, disappointed at the hearing the dissension from hearing from the vocal parent, against the vocal parents as opposed to the apathetic ones who sit back and say nothing and do nothing, which is very evident in the polls and everything else around us. Using exercise as an excuse for, for saying this, I find very irritating because exercise is a voluntary component of anybody's day. It is not something that's mandatory to get to school. Exercise prior to school, if it is a part of a school team, it's considered exercise. Walking to school is a necessity, it's not exercise. It becomes a form of type of exercise because you're walking and it could be classified as that, but exercise is a voluntary physical exertion that you use to improve yourself. When you wind up afterwards, are, son, I'm tired. I exercise a lot myself and I find myself tired too. So if I'm exercising before I'm going to class, I'm going to not be able to focus, I'm not, as, as residents here have told us and, and the parents have told us on numerous occasions, that, you know, focus is, is going to be key for success in school. If we can lessen any disability for these folk, these children to, to focus and to help them improve their educational experience here in Milford, then I think we should look at every aspect that we can. Money for versus students, safety, especially during the winter months, especially then in the district that seems to be my, my district that is, that is very vocal, safety during the winter months is, is a key component than many, many near, near accidents, which we don't ever want to see happen, should never even, the, the opportunity shouldn't even be there. And to help these kids to the best that we can, I believe is, is what we need to do, and, and it is in our best interest to listen to our constituents and listen to the constituents that are here and that are vocal, not the apathetic ones that say nothing, is, is what we should be doing, and, and I must support this, the wholeheartedly.
Other comments? Mr. DeGrego?
Chair, through you. $250,000, yes, we do owe the taxpayers of this city due consideration. When I was a policeman, I worked in operations and that included school guards. If one child gets hurt, there's going to be such a public outcry, we're going to end up with school guards. And if we end up in school guards in the third district, we're going to get school guards in every district. We're going to get at least 50 school guards, we're going to need to hire to cover these treacherous crossings. And when a school guard calls out sick, you don't say, oh, there's no school guard. It's usually the police department that has to supply a police officer to do that. And you're going to see such costs, costs that are going to spiral, you're going to wish we had the chance to spend the $250,000 now, and then the 225 million is probably going to cost us down the road over time. So I'm just advising the board, if they would reconsider $250,000 now, then what the exorbitant cost will be in the future. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yes, Sue?
Yeah?
Again, I want to piggyback off my comment last week, I believe it was getting the city more involved and getting them more responsible for enforcing the laws that are on the books, whether it be chivaling sidewalks or making sure that people do those kinds of things or truly not walk in the road. I reiterate what Mike just said. It is a safety concern as much it is a cost factor. You know, now is not the time to be spending money, but, you know, we may have a chance to spend a little, as opposed to, in the long run, end up spending a lot more, wishing the had spent in the beginning. The days are good, fall upon us. At the same point, I agree with, you know, spending, saving the money and putting it back into the programs into the school, but again, I've made numerous comments before where I think we're adding new programs every year and we're not giving the kids a chance to adjust in the system per se and really learn the system and give the teachers a chance to adapt the new programs and new methodologies and the new rules or regulations and coming down from the states and new methods of learning. So we have to find a happy medium somewhere. But if, you know, the one test that we had is that the child that was here last week for last meeting, where, you know, was got hit by the box truck during the winter months, you had to jump in the snow to get out of the way. Should be a close enough call for us to open up our eyes and say, it's more than just cost factor, it's a life factor. And, you know, we have to do what's right by the safety of the kids, that should be the number-one concern because if we don't address the safety issue and work with the city to address the safety issue, the order isn't good in the long run. So again, I've struggled with this back and forth, you know, figuring 288,000, I think this is a true figure that we came up with, not 250, for, for right around the same number of students, and to one-to-one for $1,000 roughly, if my numbers are certainly correctly. But again, I would support spending the money at this time and moving forward, and unless we could table this as a postponement and have further discussion during the board by next term, but I think we've already talked about this enough and back with what Mrs. Federico had said before about representative districts around the state that had already changed the distances to reflect the ease of use for children to get to school without any additional burdens, I'm going to lean more towards voting for it rather than against it. Thank you.
Other comments? I just wanted to make personally a clarifying statement because I've heard now comments tonight about winter months, I've heard public comment about winter months. The way I look at this, the opt-in program, for all intents and purposes, does reduce the walking distance because it allows students that live on the fringes of the mile, the mileage, to be ineligible for a bus, to actually get on a bus. And as I said earlier, every, I think every parent I've heard speak, and many of the parents that have written to us over the course of the last year, have the ability to opt on the bus as of October 1st. So they're on a bus in the winter, they are on a bus in the winter. Any other comments?
Chair?
Yeah?
Are we allowed to ask questions at this time of Mr. Cicelli or?
You could, if you want to.
Have we ever turned anybody down on the opt-in program?
To my recollection, I believe that there was one, and it was because the bus was completely full. And I believe it was down off Blue Haven Avenue on the east side of town, but it's, it's very rare. Usually, usually there is not a problem with getting the children on the bus.
But over time, you will continue to make bus routes more efficient as you have, and you would not save room for opt-in students?
Well, we, we have to, we do the ridership audits because we want to see how many kids are actually, kids that are, students that are assigned to the bus, how many are actually taking the bus. And, and there's a big gap there, and, and it varies from season to season and it varies, you know, during, you know, different sports during, during the year, but that's why there's that month gap in the beginning because we need to, we, we assign the buses as though there were going to be 50 kids assigned to the bus, but we know over a period of time that there's only a certain percentage of students that are actually riding the bus. So as, as efficient as we can get, don't forget, we're still, we're, we're still constrained by the 30-minute window. So the chances of our buses being full to capacity and, and students being turned down is very slim. It hasn't been our experience. The vast, the vast majority now, I will say it's at least 99% of the students who have asked, asked to opt in have gotten on the bus.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Why are, why do we have to add a new BOAG bus going to Tumble because?
Sure. Because if, if you lower the high school walking distance to one and a half miles, then just taking the students that we currently have going to BOAG, going back in history, as you know, we used to have two BOAG buses, and, and we were picking up probably in 20 different locations throughout Milford. And when the board wanted us to consolidate and cut from the transportation budget, that was one of the things that we identified that we could do by putting strategically located stops throughout the city and only making five or six or seven or as many as we could get in that window of time, that was the most efficient way to go, and we were able to drop down to one bus. But if you drop it down to one and a half miles, then the walking distance from the student's home to any designated spot is now not two miles, it's one and a half miles. And when we looked at and plotted each of the students that are there now, we would have to add three additional stops, and there's not enough time. The, the first student that's picked up is picked up at 5:59 in the morning, and they're dropped off at BOAG over an hour later. So there's just not enough time to add three additional stops in Milford. There's no question we would have to go to two buses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Can you reread your motion, Mr. Whiskeman, please?
Motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the revised transportation policy P three, five, four, one as presented by administration.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Roll call.
Clerk Casey?
No.
Michael DeGrego?
Yes.
John DeRosa?
Yes.
Suzanne DeBais?
Yes.
Jennifer Federico?
Yes.
Dr. Heidi Gold-Dorkin?
No.
Anthony Cicelli?
Yes.
Earl Whiskeman?
No.
Susan Glenn?
No.
Motion passes. Motion passes, five yes, four no. So you'll make those adjustments, you'll include that in your budget for next year. Okay, we move on to.
Human Resources Report, Mrs. Kapasna, and I know you're also going to be doing the annual report.
Yes, thank you. First, we'll do the monthly human resources report in the half. We'll see that there are two job openings left, mostly substitute tech positions, coaching positions, et cetera, as well as personnel recommendations for the month and the retirements, resignations and termination, nominations and the stipend appointments. Mostly, well, actually, all of the stipend appointments this month are for the team mentor stipends, which are our veteran teachers who are trained, who have been trained in the team program, which is a state program, to mentor our veteran teachers. And then also we have the extended day program over at Pumpkin Delight, the stipends for that. So let's see, any questions that you might have on that portion of my report?
Questions for Mrs. Kapasna?
I had one question on the, the job postings, the self-contained special ed teacher. Is that a new, a new classroom that's opened up or is that a teacher replacement?
That unfortunately is a teacher, one of our brand-new teachers who decided, I think, maybe to go back to her old position. I leave the district after, what is it, two months? So, and that position has been, I think, we, I think we just filled that.
Oh, okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Okay. Okay, and then we'll go on to the annual summary. Each year I basically create, again, nothing as elaborate as Mr. Gradory's, no pictures, but we do, just to kind of give you a rough idea of what HR completes each year, types of things that we do, just as a reminder. As far as staffing goes, we posted about 221 positions this year, which is up just a few from last year, so it's roughly the same. We continue to use mostly online advertising, that seems to be the way of the present and the future, I'm sure. We processed, logged, received, logged and processed approximately 3,400 applications this year, and this is a few hard copy applications, but mostly online applications, which again, that's most of our positions, we specify that that's the only way we'll accept candidates. Due to the ease of our program, our principals can be at their desk and view the same applications that I'm viewing. We don't have to send copies through the mail, et cetera. It's a much more efficient way to run, run the operation. We hired approximately 248 employees this year, processed as new hires. This includes the 49 new teachers that we hired and foreigner administrators. We do background screenings on all of our new employees regardless of what position they come in for, mandatory DCF checks and TB tests as well. We participated again in the two job fairs that we typically do, which is the Fairfield County Job Fair and the Yukon Job Fair, and we had approximately 310 people that we saw face-to-face and spoke to them, you know, some for as little as two minutes, some for, you know, much as 15, 20 minutes. PANS, those are our payroll action notices, that's how we communicate with our payroll department, and that's how things get to the budget, that's how badges are made, that's how email accounts are created, all through the PAN system as well as the badge-making system. I'm not going to read every, every one of these, but as you know, we have interns, student teachers and substitute teachers in the district. We monitor, we administer the benefits for the district relative to vacations, leave of absences, holidays, work schedules, as well as the, did I put that down there, the medical benefits, et cetera. We had a very busy year for contract negotiations, as Jim will continue on later on our agenda, but we have completed the administrator, which is the Massa Union, the custodian, maintenance union, the security guard union, food services, and also the secretaries for the year. So, I mean, it was pretty crazy. We had a very, very busy spring, summer and fall with these contract negotiations. The pairs and the teachers are the only ones that are, that were untouched this summer. Let's see, record-keeping, I touched on that a little bit as far as our files and, and our PAN system, database system, identification badges, that, that system seems to be going well as far as screening the, our badges for all of our employees. And... And record, research and recording, we continue to compile data responding to requests from various agencies, government agencies, other school districts, prepare annual federal and state reports for the state of Connecticut, State Department of Education, et cetera, and responding to Freedom of Information requests, et cetera. So I didn't want to read it, because I know you guys have it, but just wanted to touch on some of the highlights. In the next page, we talk about our new hires this year. We, like, as I mentioned before, we had forty-nine new teachers, which is just eleven shy of the number hired last year. Then last year was a huge hiring year, seeing that it was the end of the teacher contract. The forty-nine teachers represent fourteen different certification areas. I have attached a list of all of our new teachers and highlighted their educational backgrounds and what school they're working at and their actual teaching assignment. And just so you notice, the listing of the teachers is just in chronological order, who we hired first in the summer, all the way down to the end. And actually, we have hired one more since that's the purpose. So we, in addition to the hiring of teachers from outside the district, we've had at least twelve teachers voluntarily taking up new roles within the district, including our four new teacher leaders at the elementary level. And we've hired four new administrators from outside the school district, Supervisor at PPS Overseas High School, Assistant Principal at West Shore, an Assistant Principal at Raw, who I think gave that to the last meeting, and Mr. Burke, our new Assistant Superintendent. We also promoted three of our teachers to administrative positions this year. The Assistant Principals at Foreign, East Shore, and Harperside were all internal hires. And we also promoted one current administrator to a new role within the district, and that's the new principal over at West Shore. There were only six teacher retirements this past year, which is well below our average. However, last year, as I mentioned, was the end of the contract year, and we had a huge number. So that's, I think, pretty typical that you'll see that from a big year to a smaller year. And there was twenty-four teacher resignations this past summer, which struck me, it seemed like there was more, but there was only twenty-four, and last year was forty-three, so I took that as a good sign as well. And as I mentioned, the new teacher hires are here, and I must say, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what happened to Amber Gagny and Nick Levacchia, but their education somehow dropped off their schooling, they both have bachelor science degrees from Southern Connecticut. I apologize for that. That's it.
Questions for Mrs. Kapasna? Mr. Whiskeman?
Just a curiosity question on the badges. Do you have electronic access to the appropriate doors for the employee? How are substitutes handled in terms of badge and access? Do they get a same-day badge, or?
Good question. Thank you. Yeah, our substitute, day-to-day substitutes do not get badges when they check in at the particular school that they're assigned for the day. They sign in in the office, and they get a guest badge for the day, which basically identifies them as a member of the staff for the day, and it also allows them to open the doors when they go out to recess to bring their class back in, and it allows them to use the copiers they handed back in at the end of the day. Our long-term substitutes are given personalized badges, because they're typically here, you know, four to twelve, upwards of twelve weeks sometimes.
And most of the accesses are for the external doors, or are there internal locked doors that are necessarily unlocked by these badges?
They're for the external doors only.
Oh, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I had a question and a comment. I was impressed to see how many of the new hires have master's degrees.
Yes.
Quite a few of them.
I did actually count it up. I think out of the forty-nine, there was thirty-eight. Quite a few.
Yeah, thirty-eight of the forty-nine have their masters. That's great. And do we do exit interviews? I think we've asked, probably asked this every year. So what kind of exit interview do you do with the people that resign?
I typically, we send a questionnaire to them, asking them, you know, if they're comfortable handing it back, listing the reasons why they left, asking them, you know, their satisfaction level with the district with some of our programs. We get about, oh, I should, probably fifty percent of them back. Many of the employees I do talk to when they put their letter in, informally, especially our retirees, to make sure that they've got all their paperwork in with the state TRB and, you know, talk to Maria and benefits, et cetera. So it's kind of informal plus the survey.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? John, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, too, thank you.
Okay, great.
I don't have anything else, Mrs. Capasna.
All right, thank you, Dr. Fieser. We move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Whiskeman, do you have a motion?
Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the consent agenda items. Number one, the dispersment report. Number two, the consideration of minutes, October 12, 2015 Business Meeting, and October 26, 2015 Committee of the Hall Meeting.
Anthony, as Mr. Pacelli has seconded, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion carries unanimously. Madam Chair? Yes.
Can we take a short recess?
Certainly, thank you. We're going to recess. Mrs. Tobias has requested recess. And we will be, I mean, turn. John, we're going to call you back. We're going to recess and call you back, okay? John?
Sorry, I had to, yes, that's fine, Jim.
All right. All right, we're going to take a recess.
You hung up, right?
I hung up, yeah.
Take advantage of this recess for a fight and fight over.
Okay, we're back in session. Is everyone here? Okay. Mr. Whiskeman, do you have a motion?
Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the working agreement between the Milford Board of Education and the Milford Capteria Workers and Media Aides for a period commencing July 1st, 2014, and ending through two and including June 30th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry, we have to do roll call, John, I forgot. Mrs. Roll call?
Clerk Casey?
Yes.
Michael De Grego?
Yes.
John De Rosa?
Yes.
Suzanne Tobias?
Yes.
Jennifer Federico?
Yes.
Dr. Heidi Goldorkin?
Yes.
Anthony Pacelli?
Yes.
Earl Whiskeman?
Yes.
Susan Glenn?
Yes.
Your motion carries unanimously. Mr. Whiskeman?
Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the working agreement between the Milford Board of Education and Local 1303 Act 453 of Council 4, Act 888 of Council 4, for the period commencing July 1st, 2014, and ending through two and including June 30th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yep, Mr. Pacelli seconds. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Clerk Casey?
Yes.
Michael De Grego?
Yes.
John De Rosa?
Yes.
Suzanne Tobias?
Yes.
Jennifer Federico?
Yes.
Dr. Heidi Goldorkin?
Yes.
Anthony Pacelli?
Yes.
Earl Whiskeman?
Yes.
Susan Glenn?
Yes.
Ten zero.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to board comment. Board comment? Mr. De Grego?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have two comments to make. One is, a couple of weeks ago, Chairman, Chairwoman Sue Glennon and Dr. Fieser and I attended a football game at Foreign High School. They honored Coach Pepe, not for twenty-five, not for thirty-five, but for fifty years of service. I mean, there's some grandfathers out there that he probably coached well. We had a great time. Mr. Vitelli treated us like, like gold. We were feeded with cold meats, cheese, and fruits, and I sat with Mrs. Pepe and their daughter and their two granddaughters. We had a great time by all. Second, congratulations, Coach Pepe. And Mrs. Yuba, she was helping us out, too. She made sure that we didn't want for anything. Also, I'd like to say this Wednesday is Veterans Day. I got invited by the principal, Mrs. Kreuz, to Meadowside School, where I'm going to be with other veterans for a breakfast, and then we're going to go to different classrooms and talk about our military careers, and I can hardly wait for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I know you enjoyed that, Mr. De Grego.
Yes, I know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other board comment? Mr. Pacelli?
I want to take this time to thank the, my constituents in the third district for electing me to this position. It was an honor to serve you, it was my last meeting. Members of the board, it was a privilege to work with you, administration, an absolute privilege, and I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pacelli. Other comments? Dr. Goldorkin?
I also will be leaving the board after tonight's meeting, and it has been a pleasure to work with the board and administration over the last two years. I hope that the future, continue to do wonderful things for the children in Milford, and look forward to hearing about it as well. I shouldn't say that, I don't think either of you are officially off the hook until next week.
No meetings until then, please.
Yes, Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to say, oh, first of all, thank you to Dr. Heidi Goldorkin and Mr. Pacelli. It's been great to get to know you and work with you on the board. I would just like to say, I'm so relieved that we passed the shorter walking distances. Many of you have heard me talking about this for months, it was something that was very important to me. You know, I understand that we're never going to make everyone happy, but as I was walking around, talking to voters or constituents in the fall, you know, we heard people saying things like, "Oh, can you fix that K-235?" And I said, "Oh, we already did." And they said, "Great, wonderful." And then, you know, some people would say, "Yeah, keep, you know, keep my taxes low, taxes are an issue." And other people would talk about the walking distances. And anytime the walking distances came up, people asked to shorten it. Not one person ever said, "You better keep that two-mile walking distance for high school." So for me, you know, this was not only something where, you know, I felt it was important to listen to the parents, but, you know, this wasn't about appeasing the parents or, you know, doing it because people were speaking loudly. For me, it was because it was the right thing to do. So I am glad that it has passed. Thank you.
Any other comments? We see none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pacelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good night, John, I hope you feel better.
Great, thank you.